May 16th briefing session Spokane City Council called this to order. I'm Lori Kinnear, Council President Pro Tem, sitting in for Brian Beggs. Ms. Sister, do you want to call roll?
Council President Pro Tem Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Present.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Present.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Sapon.
Here.
I knew you were here.
Let the record reflect that Council President Beggs is absent.
And we'll be back next week. Everybody say hallelujah.
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 All right.
You've done such a great job.
Praise.
We do exactly as I say. Mr. Perkins, do you want to take it away?
Yes, Council President Pro Tem, thank you for that resounding introduction. Appreciate that. Good afternoon, Council President Pro Tem, members of the City Council, Madam City Clerk, and Mr. City Attorney. Good afternoon, sir. This is the advanced agenda briefing for Monday, May 23rd. Our first item up is a contract renewal with Mitchell Humphrey for an annual maintenance and support of the city's financial management system. And our presenter is our interim Director of IT, Mr. Mike Sloan.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Good afternoon, Council President Pro Tem Kinnear, council members. Nice to see you again. I don't get here often, and I really do like seeing you. It just makes the difference of having that interaction. So item one, OPR 2021 0406, in the amount of $101,585 excluding or plus tax to be added, is a renewal of our Mitchell Humphrey support of our financial management system. It covers a plethora of services that we have in the budget ledger, fixed assets, accounts payable, accounts receivable, invoice, purchasing and related modules. We did see a little bit greater increase than 3%. We negotiated hard on it, but it was just a little bit above 3% increase. That's why we're asking your approval for $101,585. And this is an annual. We don't have a multi-year per se with Mitchell Humphrey's. We've had this contract for a long time. They're the only ones that support this product, so we just do it on an annual basis. So we've had a good relationship. It's strong, and so we wanted that to continue. So asking for your approval for this contract.
Mike, why have we not ever, if they're the only ones, why have we not done a multi-year contract?
It's just not their preference.
It's not their preference, okay.
Yeah, and so that standing relationship with them has been strong. Could we pursue it? Absolutely, absolutely. But we've been, the relationship has been really stoic, so. And we wouldn't save any money by doing that. They don't give discounts for multiple years. Now, some vendors do, and we pursue that. We give the option. Our standard is three with two one-year new renewables. But Mitchell Humphrey won't give a discount for a multi-year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Item two on the consent agenda, contract renewal with Dresser-Rand Company for turbine generator services at the waste-to-energy facility. The briefer who is online is David Payne. Mr. Payne?
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, Council President Pro Tem, council members. This is the second renewal of four for Dresser-Rand Company, a subsidiary of the Siemens Energy Business, to provide technical and maintenance and repair services to our turbine and generator systems. This contract is from May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023, in the amount of $1.8 million plus tax and a 10% administrative reserve. The amount this year is significant because this is our five-year overhaul period. Next year, this contract will go back down to the $100,000. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Item number three, recommendations to list the following on the Spokane Registry of Historic Places, the Herbert and Bertha Lloyd House, Charles and Maude Kemp House, and the Daniel Paul Building. Our presenter is our Director of our Department of Historic Preservation, Ms. Megan Duval.
Do you want to try to do this all correctly? I probably already messed it up, didn't I?
Megan, could you use the microphone?
Yes, did you say this one?
Either one.
Only this one?
No, either will work.
Oh, either one. I thought you said other one.
Sorry.
This was just here as a prop. This didn't pull us.
You might need to pull it closer to you, though.
Is it sharing the screen at this point?
It is not.
Okay, I was gonna say, because I did not do anything to it. Let's see. Do you know how to do this? Sorry. I'm a rookie again. There we go. So I will give you my quick introduction to the Spokane Register of Historic Places, and then we'll move on to the three nominations. So this is our local program. The listing is voluntary. We do require the consent of the owner before we list a property. This is how we actually protect these historic resources through the management agreement. So that's the contract that you, that's your part to play, is the contract between the property owner and the city. We use design review only when a building permit is sought for the property, and this is also how we offer incentives to property owners. So in order to be eligible, generally, a property has to be 50 years old or older, and it has to meet one of the eligibility criteria in our ordinance. We can list buildings, sites, districts, structures, and objects. So the five categories, category A is its relation to a broad pattern of Spokane's history. Category B is an association with a significant person. Category C is our architecture, construction, kind of design catch-all category, the most used probably. Category D has a relation to archaeology or prehistory. And finally, we have our cultural heritage nomination, which is our newest category, and that's for things that don't necessarily fit in with just the gorgeous building or the really intact structure. This is more for a cultural tie. So getting into our nominations today. So the Paul Building was built in 1902. It's located at 823 West Second Avenue. It's eligible for listing on the Spokane Register of Historic Places under category A because it is a relatively intact example of a modest two-story commercial building that included single-room occupancy lodging and a retail commercial space on the first floor. It was constructed during the city's most significant period of growth, which was from 1900 to 1910, to house working-class people. Spokane's population rose from 40,000 people in 1900 to 100,000 in 1910. So they needed a lot of housing. Does that sound familiar? Daniel Paul, one of the building owner's developers, was a farmer, rancher, and state senator from the Cooley City area. He partnered with Fred Zahn, a Spokane barber and real estate investor, to build the building. And as you're sort of looking at these pictures, you can see that the upstairs is really intact. It's not in great condition, but it's super intact. So this really gives you a glimpse into what folks lived like in that early part of the last century. So the relatively plain and unassuming commercial building exhibits the characteristics of a single-room occupancy hotel with commercial use on the ground floor and living space above, lit by interior windows and a light well. That's what, it doesn't really make very much sense to see all these windows onto the hallways, but that is how they lit the interiors of these rooms. So it's in a deteriorated condition, but it's remarkably intact and lets us know what it would have been to like to live in downtown Spokane of 120 years ago. Residents shared a bathroom down the hall and would have more than likely eaten most meals in a local café. As described in the SRO Hotels in the Central Business District, multiple property documentation in 1993. The single-room occupancy hotels can be defined as unreinforced masonry structures of two or more stories with commercial bays on the street level and the upper floors consisting primarily of single rooms without baths. All were equipped with at least one common bath on each floor. The Paul Building retains the essential physical features of an SRO to be included on the Spokane Register of Historic Places under category C, Architecture. So the Paul Building was reviewed by the Spokane Historic Landmarks Commission and recommended for listing on, this is a long time ago, September 22nd, 2001. The delay in getting this before you was that there was just some sorting out of ownership that needed to happen before we could have that signature on there. And I'll just finish these photos up. It is in rough shape, but it's very, very cool. The second nomination is the Kemp House. Built in 1910, the Charles and Maude Kemp House at 404 West Sumner Avenue sits on a 25,000-square-foot lot that extends from Cliff Drive to Sumner Avenue. The arts and crafts style, excuse me, style house with Tudor Revival details was designed by Spokane architect Alfred Jones for the Kemp family. In addition to the family home, Jones also designed the Kemp and Hebert Department Store, that's Auntie's bookstore, you might recognize better. The Kempus Apartments, which are on the corner of Washington and Sixth Avenue. The Kemp House is significant under category C for the design of the house specifically as a work of high artistic value. The Charles J. and Maude Kemp House is designed in the arts and crafts style that emerged in the early 20th century as a counterpoint to the highly ornate Queen Anne style. As mentioned, this house represents a mix of Craftsman-era or arts and crafts homes along with Tudor Revival details. Features of the Kemp House that display elements of the arts and crafts style include the use of natural materials such as brick, stucco, wood shingles, and stone. Aspects of the house that show the fine craftsmanship include the deep eaves, exposed rafters, decorative barge boards, shaped knee brackets, and extended beam ends. Outdoor spaces include a wraparound porch, trellises, and extensive porches and balconies of very design, both covered and uncovered. Even the garage gets in on it here. The Tudor style is conveyed in the more steeply pitched roofs than a typical arts and crafts house might have, a prominent chimney, the use of decorative half-timbering details, and windows and leaded glass windows with small panes. The use of the iron cross motif, I think you can see it in the, some of the earlier pictures, it's actually on the banister as well, was part of that Tudor influence. In addition to melding these two stylistic influences together, Jones also added unique touches to the house such as the use of red mortar on beige brick, the angled brick embellishments on the two-story bay windows, the curvilinear half-timbering, and the use of beveled and glass, leaded glass in the side lights at the front entry. The design of the garage, which we saw, was constructed at the same time as the house, and it's also unique and particularly expressive. On the interior, the extensive use of wood, the simplicity of the wood trim, and box beams are reminiscent of the arts and crafts style. The 1910 Kemp House is associated with Charles J. Kemp, one of two partners who developed the Kemp and Hebert Department Store, a long-lived business from 1892 to 1951. That was one of four major department stores in the city during the prosperous first decade of the 20th century. However, Kemp only lived in the house for four years before his death in 1914. Kemp is on the left here. His widow, however, Maude, remarried and continued to live in the house for decades, only leaving upon her death in 1962. This house has only had three owners in its 111, or 112-year history. That's not very many. The Charles J. and Maude Kemp House is significant and eligible for listing in the Spokane Register of Historic Places and retains excellent integrity in original location, design, materials, workmanship, and association. The Landmarks Commission reviewed the nomination on April 20th, 2022, and recommends that it's eligible for listing on the Spokane Register under category C for high artistic values. Okay, and the final one, the Lloyd House. Built in 1910, the architecturally significant Lloyd House is located in the Cannon Hill Park Edition at 451 West Shoshone Place, one block east of Cannon Hill Park. The property is surrounded by an architecturally and historically prominent residential neighborhood with tree-lined streets and well-preserved single-family homes built between 1909 and 1945. The Hubert T. and Bertha Lloyd House and Garage in Spokane, Washington, is eligible for listing on the register under category C for its architectural significance. Praised as a model for neatness and architecture, the Lloyd House was featured with a photograph of the property in July 10th, 1910 spokesman review newspaper article. It was acclaimed as a rare Spanish Mission type with seven rooms, hardwood floors, and a lookout. The period of significance for the property is 1910, the year the home was constructed. It was erected for the property's first homeowners, the Lloyds, as seen here in their 1913 Studebaker. They were real auto files, I think is what you would call them. They had, they really did like their cars. He was an electrical engineer and successful railroad contractor with holdings in Spokane and British Columbia. Spokane building contractor E. William Larson built the home at a cost of about $5,000 for Mr. and Mrs. Lloyd. The Lloyd House is an artistic blend of Spanish Mission and Craftsman-style traditions. The one-and-a-half-story home is covered by a very low-pitched pavilion hip roof with widely overhanging eaves and exposed rafter tails. The north facade of the house features a full-length covered front porch with an arch-center entrance. The house is supported by a basalt foundation and is clad in painted beveled stucco. The interior of the Lloyd House is expansive and features large, open living areas. The living room features eight-foot ceilings with box ceiling beams and a hardwood oak floor with decorative inlaid parallel perimeter strips. A focal point of the living room is the ceramic tiled fireplace on the room's east wall with a large vertical grained fur mantle extending over built-in bookcases. The dining room also features box beam ceilings, wood wainscoting, and built-in shelves. Something that's interesting to note, and I will tell you, is almost all of the woodwork that you see was actually reconstructed by the current owners in the last year. All of the wood that was remaining had been painted many, many times over, so they literally had every bit stripped, all those windows, everything, and rehabbed. So they've done an amazing job. So the Lloyd House retains very good integrity in original location, design, materials, workmanship, and association, and is eligible for listing on the Spokane Register of Historic Places under category C for its architectural significance as a good example of a Spanish Mission-style craftsman bungalow. Property was reviewed by the Landmarks Commission on April 20th and is recommended for listing on the Spokane Register of Historic Places.
Yeah, I guess I'm kind of wondering on that, like the first one you showed, it's a little bit more dilapidated. Is there just generally a, like, does the building have to be in a certain condition, or does there have to be a commitment that it will be restored to a certain condition?
That is a great question, and the answer is no, actually. We look for something that's intact. We don't look at the condition. We are more interested in the fact that there's a lot of original material. And so for us, that's more important, really, than it being in pristine condition, and there is no recommendation or requirement, if a property is listed, that it be brought up to standards or anything like that.
But once it's listed, there's a lot of limitations on what you can do. And so if a house or a property is already in a state of, you know, being dilapidated, and it's only getting worse, and now you're limited because it's on the historical list, I guess what are the options later on for the city to try and rectify that?
So I would say that, well, one, remember, property owners have to agree to place the building on the register. So if somebody's really, has bought a property that's dilapidated and they plan to rehab it, they are usually putting it on the register so that they can take advantage of the 10-year property tax reduction for a significant improvement. Because something's important enough to be put on the register, that actually means it's important to all of us in Spokane, it's part of all of our history, and so if they significantly improve it by putting their own money into it, then there's a possibility that they get that tax reduction for 10 years. So, and the other thing to note, too, is that we only look at changes to the exterior of properties, so the inside is primarily up to the people to do what they would like with.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
But Megan, you can get an agreement if somebody does want to preserve the interior, correct?
Yes, they can add additional pieces of the interior. So it's been kind of an interesting trend that some homeowners have decided, homeowners or building owners, to add interior features to the management agreement. So sometimes you will see something on the Exhibit A of the management agreement, basically the last page, that details out things that they particularly want to call attention to and have us be able to review in the future. One woman told us that after she had spent years scraping all the paint off of her wood trim and getting it all done, that she thought about putting the wood on, you know, the interior wood on the management agreement, that it couldn't be painted in the future. It's a little difficult for us to really be able to, you know, regulate that because people don't have to come in and get a building permit for that. But she elected just to come back as a ghost and haunt anybody that ever painted that woodwork again. That was what she kind of said, "Well, I'll leave it off the management agreement, but I will haunt that person," so. Anything else? We're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Item four is a low bid to be determined at bid opening today, Monday, May 16th, for Cycle 9 School Safety Projects, and the presenter is Dan Bueller.
Good afternoon. Item four is the blank, is blank on your agenda, but we just opened the bids about two hours ago, and Cameron Riley of Spokane Valley is the apparent low bidder at $1,597,275, to which we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project is the annual school safety project and installs sidewalk infill at a number of locations throughout town, as well as rectangular flash, rapid flashing beacons at pedestrian crossings, at Euclid and Cook, near Bemis Elementary, 18th and Bernard, near Cotaldo Elementary, Nansen Perry, near Grant Elementary, and two school 21 flashing signs near Gonzaga Prep, and finally, two hawk signals at Francis and Cook, near Arlington Elementary, and Northwest Boulevard in York, near Audubon Elementary. This project is funded by School Zone and Fraction Funds. The low bid from Cameron Riley is approximately $141,000, or about 10% above the engineer's estimate. A total of three other bids, rather, three total bids were received.
Thank you, Dan. Item five, 5A and B lease agreement amendments with 5A, the West Central Community Development Association, and 5B, the Northeast Community Center Organization. Our presenter is our Director of the Office of Neighborhood Services, Carly Courtwright.
Good afternoon, council. So I briefed this last week, urban experience. We did make the recommended change, speaking with Dave Richardson, the Executive Director at Northeast Community Center. They already let the like-minded organizations that have a very similar mission statement to them use the facility without charge. So we just included that as basically an appendix within the lease agreement, so we're honoring sort of that agreement to let grassroots organizations use that space. And that's the only change.
I'll just say, I have connected with Dave, and he's been very appreciative of the work that you guys have done with him and the direction and the final setup on this lease, so I think it's good to go.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you, Carly. Item six, report of the mayor of pending 6A, claims and payments of previously approved obligation, including those of Parks and Library, claims approved by their respective boards. Item 6B, payroll claims of previously approved obligations. Both those information and numbers will be filled in and completed for council's consideration next Monday, May 23rd. Item seven, city council meeting minutes. That information will also be completed next Monday, May 23rd, for council's consideration. Under special budget ordinances, under the Fleet Services Fund, our first special budget ordinance up for presentation arises out of an action from the creation of the Clean Fuel Infrastructure Reserve Plan, and our presenter is Rick Giddings.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. So this is for the Clean Fuel Infrastructure Reserve, SBO, that I briefed at the committee. I'm not actually sure how it got on the committee and the advance agenda on the same day. It's important to note that the supporting documentation for this is from a previous version, it's from the, from the original version, actually, and so if this does move forward, we will put the appropriate documentation and the revised ordinance, we'll attach it to it. Any questions on this?
So you want us to defer it for a week, or just let it go forward?
And that is totally up to you. It'll be ready next week, but we're in absolutely no hurry on this, so we can certainly follow the appropriate protocols.
We can add it to the packet next week so that it's in there for you guys to vote on, on Monday.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Our next special budget ordinances deals with a number of positions in the city council offices, as well as one addition in the mayor's office specifically to the city administrator. And our presenter is Matt Boston.
Yes, thank you. So this is just reallocating funds in the mayor's office from a policy advisor to a temp seasonal, as well as adding funds for an executive assistant for the city administrator. The council side is adding, or is increasing the step, the range of two director positions, Director of Communications and the city council office director, up to their administration counterparts, as well as increasing the range for the Housing and Homelessness Initiative Manager and the Manager of Equity and Inclusion. The overall increase to the mayor's office changes is a $43,900 increase to the general fund expense, while the council is a net-neutral budget as it's pulling from budget reserves.
So I brought this up last time, legislative assistants, they work their asses off, they're not included in this. How do we address that?
That's not one that I'm going to be able to answer off the top of my head. I mean, I think that's going to be continued work that's going to have to happen and discussion that's going to have to happen within the council.
If I may, I believe council members would need to work together to revise a job description and send that to HR for reclassification.
Do we, do we know how quickly we could get that, that done? Because some of the raises in here are like 50% of the salary of my aide, and so...
Speaking on behalf of HR, we will do that as quickly as possible, and I will get together with my, with HR during my one-on-one this week to outline a timeline when that can happen. Councilmember Bingle.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Boston. Under resolutions and final reading ordinances, under the first resolution is establishing a year-long 20 mile-per-hour speed limit on streets adjacent to certain parks. And Council President Pro Tem Kinnear, I have you on my scorecard as...
You do?
Yes.
I'm not going to score here. I'm going to move that we defer this indefinitely based on my conversation with Marlene Weiss from Public Utilities, and when we start implementing our traffic cameras in parks and around hospitals, we will be able to mitigate some of this. What Marlene did say was that we're going to need to do traffic studies if we change the speed on arterials year-round to 20 miles an hour. She also indicated that the seasonal speed limits garner more attention from drivers than having them at set speed year-round. And she was advocating for, so for example, around parks, with the way we, you know, when we're doing yours, for example, in your district, we change it to 20 miles an hour during the summer. She's saying that is more effective than keeping it 20 miles an hour year-round. This does not affect the residential streets, so we can still keep those around parks at 20 miles an hour. This is for arterials. And when we do start implementing our traffic cameras, then we can start to address the arterials that we think are problematic.
So at this point in time, will those signs, once we get past summer, will those signs be removed?
Though, Marlene says they would be removed and go back to 30 miles an hour.
Okay.
For arterials.
Or whatever their speed limit was.
Mostly 30. And the biggest issue really is people not going, it's not that people are going 30, it's that people are going 35 and 40.
Right.
So having some kind of enforcement, I think, is critical to having speed limits that we're enforcing.
I, one example on Crestline, where we've lowered the speed... I, one example on Crestline, where we've lowered the speed limit, and the neighborhood is supportive of keeping that, but that may be removed as a result of this. But I always try to go 20, and I've always got people who are right on me when I do that. And it's, you know, a little annoying, but it's just the way it is, so...
It's more than a little annoying, but yeah. So let's see how this unfolds when we get some cameras around parks.
I'll second that.
It's an ongoing thing, so thank you.
I'm sorry, who made the motion to defer?
I, I made the motion to defer.
I'll second.
You're the chair.
I cannot make the motion to defer.
I will make the motion.
Sorry, I'm ahead of myself.
I second, I guess.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So indefinitely. Terry, thank you for keeping me on track.
The next resolution is a resolution amending information of appointing city council members to various boards, committees, and commissions for 2022. And our presenter is the Director of the City Council Office, Hannah Lee Allers.
Thank you. This is just a simple resolution, putting Councilmember Zepone on the AWC board and replacing Councilmember Stratton with Council President Beggs on the bid board.
Sorry, real quick question. Is there, what's our process for doing that? Because I would have enjoyed having a shot at, you know, the bid board or AWC or something like that. And so I don't know what the process is for nominating others to go into that.
There's not really a formal process. I mean, it's somewhat similar to how the boards and commissions are put together to start with, where council president kind of starts with it and reaches out for feedback.
Okay.
I don't know why you weren't asked for these. I'm sorry about that.
Just a question. I had heard there was some discussion around actually changing our position on both DSP and the bid board to be liaisons rather than actually sitting on.
Yeah.
Is there something forthcoming on that?
So this is written as a liaison member for the bid board. We, as council, you guys don't have an actual seat on DSP that you appoint.
Okay.
So this does list them as liaison, and then council president will be going to their meeting, hopefully their next meeting, and having a discussion about whether that needs to change in their bylaws as well.
Okay.
If I could fill in the other part of your question with DSP, both Councilmember Wilkerson and I discussed it with incoming president, Chair of DSP, Stephanie Curran, and...
And new executive director?
New, yes. New executive director, and she indicated that she would like us to stay on as voting members.
Councilmember Bingle, I have other positions that I'd be happy to share with you. We can discuss it later, so...
And these could all change again for 2023. So I think Brian was just trying to get it done, so...
Under final reading ordinances, establishing water conservation and drought response measures. Council President Pro Tem, I also have you.
That's me again. Thank you. And we are, we met with Marlene again this morning, this afternoon, and made a few more changes. I met with some other council members who were bargaining heavily. And so we're going to be submitting by Wednesday a revised version of this drought conservation and response measures and for next week's vote. So the version that you have is likely not the version we'll be voting on, but you will get it soon.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Next ordinance is amending Spokane Municipal Code relating to commercial vehicles. Our presenter, I believe who is online, is Mary Meramatsu.
Yes, good afternoon, members of council. This is a very minor amendment to Spokane's Commercial Motor Vehicle Order, SMC 16A 44100. It incorporates RCW 4625170, the penalty section of the Uniform Driver's License Act. This allows misdemeanor enforcement for driving without a CDL. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that may not have previously been answered concerning this amendment.
Thank you, Mary. Our next ordinance is the interim zoning ordinance concerning the siting of indoor shelters for vulnerable and homeless individuals and families. Our presenter, the Director of Neighborhood Housing and Human Services, Mr. Eric Finch.
Good afternoon, council. And again, just for your consideration, as we also briefed last week, you know, this is kind of one step of a kind of a seven-step process for looking at how we provide shelters, emergency shelters in our city. This zoning ordinance is kind of like that first advanced step, you know, of the, of the seven. The other, you know, that we're in consideration now are the budget review that we first did with you on, on the 2nd of May to look at at least the funding that's available and the funding that potentially would be needed going forward. The building lease, which is in progress. The operator and services RFP, you know, which closes this Thursday, and then it'd be about seven to 10 days after that, you know, to get the, the review and the, and the recommendations back from that review committee. Then, you know, I think with that selected operator completing, completing the site use plan, right now that we have the operator identified, which kind of is, is where I think all those final questions in terms of separation and how we'd activate the space would be done. Impact mitigation, you know, plan and the funding strategy for that impact mitigation for the surrounding area. And it also includes, obviously, you know, continuing to look at that new ordinance revisions to help make progress there. So those are those, those areas that are part of this as, as the background for the interim zoning.
I just have a quick question. I may have heard this wrong. Did you say that an operator has been identified?
No. That RFP closes this Thursday.
Okay.
And it'll be about seven to 10 days after that, you know, for the review committee to come back with their recommendations and then for us to bring that forward.
I'll wait.
I just had a question. Do we know who's on that review committee?
Yes. So it's kind of, it's kind of spelled out, it's kind of a multi-agency approach, as well as representation from each of our boards, you know, both the CHHS Board as well as the COC. It has, you know, a rep that we've connected with the, the Health District, and one individual from the, the local business community in vicinity of the shelter.
So Eric, is that review committee under the same obligations constraints that the COC was under? Do they have to follow the same guidelines?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And again, it's meant to be structured again so that it kind of has that neutral, unbiased. It will also be made up of two providers that are not, that have not competed, right? So we'll have that, that, I mean, we can't select those until we know who submits. Any other questions? And again, we appreciate the support. The zoning piece is really one of the foundational steps.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean we're done. But, you know, I think as we bring forward the rest of the package, then that would be where the rest of the dialogue happens, and we look forward to that conversation.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of adjusting tonight's agenda.
You'll need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll then move to substitute ordinance three, C 36211, the version that was circulated to council earlier today.
Second.
Does that mean we're going to be voting on it tonight? Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Well, this motion is just to substitute the version.
Gotcha.
So do you need a second motion later?
You could combine them, I think.
Okay.
And, and do one motion to substitute the version and move it to tonight's agenda if you wanted to.
Thank you. Well said, Ms. Fister.
I still second that.
Still discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Tonight's the night.
All right. Council President Pro Tem, our final item on the advance briefing for Monday, May 23, is under first reading ordinances. And this is amendment to ordinance that vacated a portion of Gardner Avenue. And our presenter is Mr. Eldon Brown.
Good afternoon, council. Originally, this section of Gardner Avenue was vacated in 1981. I think it was part of the parking arrangement over there for the stadium. With the new downtown stadium, the intent is to actually release that cross Hesteri in the red in there. We had an easement retained back in 81 when it was vacated for, I think it was Pacific Northwest Bell at the time, it's now Lumen. So we're trying to release that easement in there. They want to build across there. And we will also be coming back to release the other two sections of that road, Boy Scout Way and the East Side and Gardner will be going through a vacation process to try to actually vacate the whole thing at some point in time here, because they do want to build over that whole section of roadway between Howard and Winston ultimately. But the first step was just releasing this easement that we have in that middle section. And so that's what we're here before you to do, is release that Lumen easement, and then we'll move on to the vacations of the round two. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Council President Pro Tem, that concludes our advance briefing.
Wonderful. Thank you all. And we will resume, we don't have an executive session, so what, oh, of course. What would we do without Terry? I need a motion to approve the advanced agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Advanced agenda is approved. And we will see you all at 6 o'clock. And meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
See? Short, short.